All right, thank you all for being here for the meeting on September, what, 25th? All right. First, we've got to approve the minutes from August 14th. Everybody get a chance to read them? Yeah, it was a long time. Any issues with the minutes, guys? No? 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 All right, in that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
We do need to do the roll call first.
Oh, yeah, shoot, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. This is what happens when I don't have my paperwork.
It's been since I was 14.
Yeah, I totally forgot.
You have to retrain us.
Sorry. Thanks, Will. All right, roll call. Steve Ball.
Here.
Phoebe Benziger.
Chad Huffman.
Here.
Delphine Shadow is absent. Richard Rogers is absent. Ron Cairns.
And I'm David Fisring, and I'm here.
Okay, now we can approve the minutes.
So I make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, thanks, Phoebe. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chad. All right. In that case, sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? All right. Minutes are passed. Additions or deletions from the agenda staff?
None.
Okay. In that case, we'll have our first agenda item this evening, but before that, Chad, go ahead, buddy.
So for consistency purposes, I will recuse myself from this event due to the proximity of myself to other family members in the nearby neighborhood. So, have fun.
All right, thanks, Chad. All right, William, go ahead with the agenda item.
All right, we'll wait for Chad to step out, and then we'll begin. Okay, so this is a subdivision application located on the northwest corner of Miami Road and 6700 Road. Just to be clear, because a few people have contacted me about this thinking it's a rezone application, this is a subdivision application, not a rezone application. The property is zoned R2 low-density district. This is a 20.49 acre site legally described as Lot 2 of the Sugar Pine Minor Subdivision. The preliminary plat proposes 62 single-family residential lots, which is a use by right in the R2 zoning district. To briefly describe the subdivision process, any subdivision first needs to go in front of the Planning Commission as a sketch plan. This process gives the opportunity for the Planning Commission and for the public to provide feedback on the proposal, but nothing is approved or denied at that time. The sketch plan came in front of the Planning Commission on June 26th of this year. The next step is a preliminary plat, which does get voted on by the Planning Commission and City Council. When approved, this plat permits the applicant to begin infrastructure improvements such as utilities, roads, et cetera. Once completed, the applicant must bring a final plat to City Council, which formally subdivides and creates individually conveyable properties. With any subdivision application, we do have a set of review standards that we have to follow. The proposal must be consistent with the existing zoning, master plan, and subdivision regulations. We review for the relationship with the development to topography, soils, drainage, flooding, and potential hazard areas. The subdivision must have available water and sewers, stormwater drainage, and access to other utilities. We review for the compatibility with the natural environment, wildlife, and vegetation. The subdivision must complete a traffic study to show that it is compatible with adjacent streets and traffic flow, including pedestrian activity. Fire, police, and other emergency services must be able to serve the subdivision, and they are reviewed for impacts on area schools. According to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, this area is shown as residential mixed-density low, which indicates the area is appropriate primarily for single-family homes, but also potentially some small amounts of attached residential development, such as duplexes or townhomes. As mentioned, this is zoned R2 low-density district, within which single-family residential development is a use by right. The surrounding area is zoned R1A large estate district, R2 low-density district, R3 medium-density district, and P public district. And then this is the actual plat itself, page one, that is. The first page is all plat notes and signature blocks. I do know that these are hard to read on these screens up here, but they are available in tonight's packet, which is found online as a PDF. They're much easier to read on there. This second page shows the actual subdivision itself. As mentioned, 62 single-family lots in the R2 zoning. There is a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet for single-family development, and all lots must meet this minimum. Of the, of this area, 11.51 acres consist of the residential lots. 3.93 acres are proposed as right-of-way dedication, and the remaining 5.05 acres consist of open space tracks. This final page shows their intended phasing plan. They do intend to start in the southwest corner with 10 lots and generally continue to the northeast. In summary, staff finds that this preliminary plat complies with the city's subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan. The proposal meets the intent and requirements of the underlying zoning district. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat with the standard condition that we recommend for all preliminary plats, as shown on the screen. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Scott. Do you want us to do my screen?
I don't think so. I think Scott's fine. If you can go back maybe to the plat overview, I think that'd be fine. Yeah, that'll work. So, in the past, we've kind of touched on the utility stuff, but there's usually a lot, and there's becoming enough questions about all the various utility elements. I'll do a quick run-through on all the various aspects and the preliminary plat process, how it relates to the infrastructure side of things. So, our department, the engineering department, we're responsible for the review and construction of the, our review and inspection and acceptance of the, all the public infrastructure associated with the development. So, when they come in with a preliminary plat like this, with that includes all the design studies for water, sewer, traffic, drainage, all of those things, and, and the plans themselves. So those, we review, usually go multiple iterations to get everything ironed out and working right. And then, once that's approved through this preliminary plat process, they're authorized to start construction. The construction is done by the developer and then inspected by the city. So, at the end of the day, when they get everything built, as long as they've built everything per our specs and can demonstrate all of that, their engineer certifies it, and then we certify it, and then they become public streets and public utilities at that point. So that's the overall process. I'll, I'll touch on each of those, just so you guys are aware of how it's going to be set up. So the more straightforward ones are water and sewer. So water, they'll connect to existing City of Montrose mainlines in both 6700 and Miami. They are within the city's water district. We have ample water resources to serve them, so no issues there. They have to demonstrate that, under the current conditions with their development plus all of the known anticipated development in the area, which is, you know, had various preliminary plats over the last several years, they demonstrate that you can meet fire flow, which is usually what governs, but obviously base flow plus, plus fire flow to make sure that you have fire protection throughout the entire subdivision. They do, based on all the modeling, and then they also have to prove that out before they can get a preliminary plat as well. So after they construct all that infrastructure, they have to show through hydrant flow tests that they actually do have the, the fire protection there. So, don't expect any issues in this area. It's a, it's a well-built-out area of town as far as water infrastructure goes. So, on the sewer side, they'll be tying into existing mains going down Miami, and, or towards the west. And this is a separate basin from like the Sugar Pine to the north, which is a zone basin. But within this one, adequate capacity does exist to serve this, and some of the woods crossing, which was a couple of years ago, also ties into this. All of that was accounted for, and still excess capacity remains after the subdivision comes through. On the stormwater side, they take all their drainage to detention ponds. That attenuates for both water quality and water quantity. So you're, you're taking the peak of the storm, putting it into a pond, and releasing it slowly into Cedar Creek there. Two things that does, one, it doesn't exacerbate any flooding within Cedar Creek, so they have to keep flows below pre-development levels. But that also addresses water quality, so you can sell out any potential silt, you know, other types of pollutants, so they don't go into the waterway, and that's regulated by the state. We, we review for it, but it ultimately comes down to clean water act stuff with the state. The site is within a flood plain. They've been able to, with their setbacks from the creek, been able to get, I think, all but maybe one or two lots out of the flood plain. And there's also a floodway, which is the main channel. Everything is outside of that. Lots can develop within the flood plain, they just have to, under FEMA regulations, have to set the, the house one foot above the flood elevation, which in this case should be pretty easy to do. On the trail side of things and pedestrian connections, so our comp plan has a trail running through along the Arroyo. They've included that here. It'll be an HOA trail, open to the public going along the Arroyo. As part of the design, we wanted to make sure that was sufficiently set back from the, or not from the Arroyo, from Cedar Creek. We want to make sure that was sufficiently set back, so not create an attractive nuisance, and also not experience any issues with erosion, you know, say like an outside bend that is going to keep eroding and end up occupying that trail and, and worse yet, go into residential lots. After walking it, we're comfortable with what they're proposing. Ultimately, they will remain responsible for that land. It's, it's an HOA tract and a neighborhood tract, but we had them, we actually had them move it in a couple of places to get a little further setback. And as a city, we're comfortable. Again, you know, that comes down to their design and where they want it, and their designer, as long as we don't have to play the safety card, which in this case, you know, we're comfortable we don't have to. Traffic's the next big one, I guess. Before that, I'll pause if there's any questions or anything before traffic.
Excuse me?
From the panel, we'll have, we'll have public comment here.
I'm asking you to move closer to your microphone, we're having a very hard time hearing you.
Sure. Let me blow on it. I'll do the Nintendo trick. This one requires the Nintendo trick, so. Okay. Try that again. So on the traffic side of things, this is large enough that it triggers a traffic impact study. What those look for are capacity of the roadways, and then various warrants for either intersection improvements, turn lanes, signals, things of that sort. Through this study, the main findings were, it's not large enough to, to warrant dedicated turn lanes, so Miami and 6700 would stay in their current configuration. When evaluating the intersection of 6700 Miami, it can continue to operate in its current configuration with this added volume and still be within typical industry standards for level of service. The city is working on the intersection of 6700 and the highway. So out there, that's controlled by CDOTs. We have to hit a certain volume threshold before we can put in a signal there. I don't think we're there, but we actually just did counts, and we'll add these counts into it, and are doing the studies so that we know, when it does hit those volumes, we will, the city would put in a signal. CDOT doesn't do it, it has to, it would be a city thing. It becomes a CDOT signal, but, so that's in the works. The city's working on a widening of the 6700 bridge. That project is scheduled to start late '27, early '28. And, and then, you know, Miami is likely to stay in its current configuration. Capacity-wise, it has it. It obviously doesn't have pedestrian facilities, but the, this subdivision will add pedestrian facilities along 6700 and Miami as they go with their phasing, so at least getting neighborhood connectivity. The issue obviously remains of, the remainder of Miami, which is, you know, a $10 to $20 million project, that, you know, as buildout occurs, that'll eventually become warranted, just not a lot of volume on it right now compared to other capital priorities. I think that's it, as far as, if there's any questions on those pieces.
You guys got questions for Scott? Nope? Nope? Okay. All right, thanks, Scott. You guys got questions for planning staff? Richard, you look like you might have a question. Not Richard, Ron, sorry. Sorry, bud. Sorry. Okay. All right. In that case, where are we at here? We'll open up, you guys got questions for the applicant? Do you want to bring Chris up here?
Is he? Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Chris, are you out there? You're somewhere, I know you are. You want to come up and say anything else?
Question?
Just state your name and address for us, please.
Yeah, Chris Cook, 2049 Brookway. So, kind of just to touch on what Scott said, we're going to go in for straight zoning. It's R2. We're not asking for any variances. We've walked it, and we've taken a look at the path, making sure that it's adequately set back from Cedar Creek, you know, making sure that the, we had the city's blessing to make sure that it was far enough. We've done our traffic studies, we've done all of the, all the testing that's been required up to this point, and everything seems to meet. So, we're not asking for any variances. We're not asking for setback variances. It's just straight zoning for R2 for a single-family development.
You guys got any questions for Chris? Phoebe? All right. Well, for now, Chris, you can have a seat, I guess. Thanks, bud. William, real quick, could you go back to the slide that has, I think it's up there, that says like what's allowed in R2? Do we have that, like what type of residences? Okay, thank you. Yeah, just confirming that the R2 is for single-family. I just wanted to have that up there, just in case we get some questions on that. All right, in that case, we will open up the public comment portion of this agenda item. Just real quick, a raise of hands of how many of you are here because of this agenda item? Okay. All right, in that case, we are going to read my public comment spiel. All right, and this is, just so you guys know, if you've been to one of these meetings before, then you've heard this already. If you've never been to one of these meetings before, this is just to give you an idea of how this part of the proceedings work. And they work this way, so that all meetings are done the exact same way, and it's fair for everyone that's on, on your side, on the public side, but also just respecting everybody's time, and, you know, everybody wants to say something, and that way everybody gets a chance to. As far as the formality of it, it is overly formal, so just bear with us as far as the rules for that, and it just makes the meeting go a lot smoother. So, the public comment period of tonight's agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns on the agenda item being heard by the Planning Commission. If you'd like to comment this evening, just raise your hand, and you'll be called up to the podium. Prior to any comments, please state your full name and address for the record. Your comment period will be limited to three minutes. We've got the counter up here on the TVs, so hopefully, at least on this one, you should be able to see it. When, I don't know if this one flashes, or beeps, or does anything, but basically, as you see it get close to zero, please try to wrap up your, your, your comment. If you guys have somebody from an HOA or a spokesperson talking for multiple members, that's okay too, but we're still limiting those people to speak for three minutes. Comments made during the time should be addressed to the Planning Commission only, not to the applicant, who's back at a seat, the staff that are off to our sides, or other members of the public. That's the hardest thing for you guys a lot of the time, and I know it's weird, but even if you have a question for Scott, don't turn to Scott and ask him the question, you need to address us up here. We're listening to your questions and concerns, and then we will readdress those afterwards. Please be aware that neither the Planning Commission, city staff, nor the applicant are expected to respond or engage in a discussion or debate during the public comment period. The Planning Commission will ask questions of the staff and applicant after the public comment period is over, as deemed appropriate. Everybody will get the chance to speak once until everyone has had the opportunity to speak. Please limit your comments to items that add to our discussion. If someone else has already mentioned the point or points that you wanted to make, please feel free to state that you, you agree or disagree with, with those issues, but just be respectful of everybody's time, and refrain from just restating the same issues over and over again. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity, or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law, and those will not be permitted. Once the public comment period is closed, the Planning Commission will not accept further public comment. And with that, we'll start on this side in the front, and work our way across and back. So, over here. One of you guys in that row, come on up.
Good afternoon, I'm Nancy Foot. I live at 2807 Primrose Court. And, in looking at the preliminary plat with the different phases, and I'm concerned about, as we go through one and two, seems like the entrance onto Miami would probably be sufficient, but once you add Phase 3, and you only have one access on Miami, that seems like a lot of traffic coming in and out of that one spot. At what point would the Planning Commission, the City Council insist on them breaking through on, is it Brookview Road on 6700 Road? That's, that's my question, my concern about all, everything feeding out onto Miami and not out on 6700 Road. And you say that it meets all traffic things, but if we build up to 51 homes coming out on Miami in one spot, that seems to me to be a lot. So, something you might consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Sir?
Good afternoon, Fernando Valera, 2949 Ivy Drive. In previous meetings that have taken place regarding whatever development this was going to end up being, a gentleman that was familiar to many of you, I believe is a former firefighter or paramedic, stood up here and said that this did not look like it was going to be a place where emergency vehicles could come in and get to where they needed to be, if there was any street parking. Now, I understand it's private development, it'll have its own HOA, but one of the things that's important is what and who is going to enforce keeping vehicles off the street, because from the measurements that we were taking at that time, two vehicles on the street on opposite sides would completely block a fire truck, and might block a paramedic ambulance. These are narrow, narrow streets. I'm sure they're within the legal limit, but then again, who enforces that? And I'm very concerned about the safety aspect of it. The second thing I'd like to address is, I greatly appreciate Chad Huffman's integrity in standing up and saying that he felt that even the appearance of a conflict of interest was too much, and that he wanted to recuse himself. And I just want to make sure that everybody here does the same thing. We trust that you do not have personal relationships, friendships, social relationships, and other things with the developer. I would ask anybody else who feels that even the appearance of impropriety would be inappropriate to please recuse themselves also. But the safety issue is my primary concern. Can we get, as a city, the emergency services in there that need to be, that need to be, go in? And the third thing is, we have been told that Miami and the sewer systems in Miami and on 6700 can handle the added volume. Can the City of Montrose, do we have enough capacity to have the safety margin we need to have? Can the City of Montrose sewer system, sewer, sewage treatment handle that? Because I have heard nobody address that part of it. And shouldn't those things be cleared up and established before we proceed any further? Thank you.
Thanks, Fernando. All right, anybody behind that row? I think I saw a couple of hands earlier. Sir?
Mario Capolorello, I live at 2916 Pembroke Way in Columbine Point. My question is, last time we were here in June, I believe Scott said that they were going to put a wider and larger bridge in the fall of '25, and tonight I heard that it might be in the fall of '27 or '28, and I don't understand why it's been pulled back. That's my question.
All right, thanks, Mario. Anybody else over on this side? Nope? Okay, we'll come over here to the front. Anybody over here?
God. I was all told.
Scott Hawkins, 2739 Caboose Drive. Thanks. And as a gentleman said, that we've, we've had these conversations, but I appreciate your time. A couple of things that, that I would just like to address is, not necessarily, it is related to the Meadowbrook subdivision, but the builder has come before you, the planning commission and the city council, with the buildout also of Sugar Pine, which is the north lot. The concerns are that, we are, a lot of us are concerned that they're pushing this subdivision and this plat through prior to him submitting the Sugar Pine plat, and I don't understand why they're not done at the same time, because a lot of us have came before you to, to address the traffic situation that's going to happen into Iron Horse subdivision, once that, that Sugar Pine's built out. This plat doesn't leave any room for, like, if they're going to require the traffic studies done by the, the engineering department, and it deems that, that Caboose Drive and all of those other streets can't handle the Sugar Pine subdivision traffic, and I know that they said that those streets were built for the addition of like subdivision going in north of Cedar Creek, but that was when, that was, when Iron Horse went in, it was, that was all zoned R2. It was not zoned R3. It wasn't for the traffic of multi, you know, dwellings. So that's one of those concerns that we're looking at is, I would strongly, like, ask this Planning Commission to wait until the developer gives you the plat for the Sugar Pine subdivision. Look at both of those together, and then do your traffic studies and everything, because if you guys push this one through, what happens to us? We feel like, like this is our last hope in the Iron Horse subdivision, of our argument of that subdivision cannot handle the traffic of the Sugar Pine subdivision going in. It just can't handle it, and the safety and welfare of everyone in that subdivision as, as we are right now. So that would be one of my recommendations, is like, if you could, please ask the builder, like, what's his intent with Sugar Pine? And why, why, that, his whole thing was, when he tried to rezone, this part of this went to R3, was all multi-dwellings, like duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. Why isn't that being before you, prior to this R2 subdivision? So I would just ask that you guys, you know, do your due diligence on that. Work with the builder to see what this looks like. And I also want to go back to what Nancy mentioned about the emergency services part of that, because I'm in that industry, and she has a very valid point, that you got one pinch point for a subdivision going in that's up to 50-some homes with one, one entrance and one ingress egress, but that, that should probably be addressed, because if that's pinched off in a, in a situation of fires or anything else to that nature, you could put a lot of lives at risk for evacuation. So she did bring up a good point of that, too. But other than that, we will look at when this comes through for the, for the Sugar Pine, because I'm very curious that, what would, that would look like. All right, thanks, Scott.
Hello, I'm Martin Crespin, I'm at 150 Roundhouse Street. And I just simply want to address one point, and that is, the, the building on the plat, Brookview Lane, ends in a cul-de-sac just before the creek. And that does not allow any of the new Sugar Pine addition any access. They're landlocking the Sugar Pine portion. And this is a good way to get out of building a bridge that the contractor, the single contractor, is building both subdivisions, but he doesn't want to connect them, which means that the Sugar Pine has insufficient access, whether or not for emergencies or not, or just the people. We're going to be going through a, the Iron Horse, and what this Brookview Lane as a cul-de-sac, rather than connecting his two pieces of property, causes is that landlocks that Sugar Pine. So it does have an impact. I don't want to talk about Sugar Pine, but rather, Brookview cul-de-sac needs to be rethought. I've talked to Chris about this before, and he is not in belief that it's needed. However, if you live there, that cul-de-sac removes an opportunity to bridge to his second property. So please keep that in mind prior to approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Martin. Anybody else over here on this side? Nobody? Way more of you raised your hands earlier, but. All right. Okay. Go ahead.
David, David Wentz, 134 Roundhouse Street, Montrose. I just have a quick question for you guys. When Jason Beiler was going to develop that subdivision, he was going to be required to put a bridge from both those subdivisions. Why are we not requiring this developer to do the same thing? Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? Okay. We'll close the public comment portion for this agenda item. And, once I get my notes up here, we'll bring it back to Planning Commission.
And once I get my notes up here, we'll bring it back to the planning commission. Real quick, our legal team, just for, I think a couple of points were brought up there that were, were valid, but when, when can we as the planning commission, or can we ever take into account another development or adjacent developments that may or may not be happening at the same time, and their impact on the one that is before us?
What is before you is what you are voting on. It is irrelevant as to the developments that may or may not come before you at a later date. It's, it is irrelevant. It is not before you today. What is before you is, does this preliminary plat meet the code?
And one thing I'll add, that is another layer of protection. So when that future development does come, it, its traffic study has to account for all known, just like this one accounted for Woods Crossing, even though there's, Woods Crossing North isn't building out. It's been approved, it's known, we have a unit count. So it, it accounts for, it doesn't just ignore that there's another subdivision that came before, even if it hasn't built out. If it's an approved preliminary plat, it does get accounted for in future traffic studies. So Sugar Pine's traffic study will account for Brookside Meadows.
The entire buildout?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, thanks Scott for doing that. Thanks Chris for the insight. So, just planning commission, just keep that in mind, please. Fernando brought up a point, Scott, about the roads being narrow. And I can barely see on the screen here, so let me bring it up on my computer. It looks like 25 feet from curb to curb. Is that the width? Or is it, or 20, oh, is it 25 feet to the middle? So it's 50 feet.
Yeah, they're 50-foot rides away, so I think that might have been a carryover. So that was a thing that was being worked through on the Iron Horse subdivision, because those streets were only built about two-thirds of the way across because of some great separation there. You didn't have full widths of the road. This entire subdivision are city standard minimum roads, full pavement width of, I think, 36 feet, which is the standard throughout nearly all modern subdivisions within the city. So no, no variances for a more narrow street or anything like that. Here, it's a full 50-foot rideaway.
Okay. So then, that being said, Nancy's point about the phasing and just looking at it, I, I do, I do see what she's saying. I mean, whether it's for the normal traffic or for emergency services, if you've only got one entrance and exit, and you get into, what is it, like Willowbrook Drive, and there's a, a cul-de-sac there, that, how are you gonna get a fire truck to get in or out of that space safely?
Yeah, so the reason that we put phasing plans in the plats is to memorialize it and essentially hold that contractor to it. So these are reviewed by emergency medical services, so the fire, cities, internal police, and, and our E911 coordinator for those types of things. So they're the ones that make the call on that. We don't have specific codes. It's not always a hard and fast number. It really comes down to what, what will they need? And they look at the scenarios of how would they fight, where would they fight from, what hydrants are available, if you had a fire, things of that sort. You know, that being said, there's neighborhoods with a lot more, a lot more units on a lesser access. And, you know, our, we've talked about those with our EMS and fire, and they've been okay with those. They're okay with, they obviously approve and we're okay with this one. So that is something that gets reviewed by those doing that work.
And does that go, is that anywhere, I know most of you can't see this, and I can barely see it on my computer, but just so that, whether we know it's on there or not, like, in these plats? Because obviously, you know, the, the fire marshal's not here, and those other EMS people don't come to these meetings. Is it somewhere in the plat where, like, it, it's gotten their blessing? Or is it just that we, we know that it's got their blessing?
It's before you until it's got the blessing from all the various agencies, city and outside.
Okay. Good to know. Could you talk a little bit about, just in general, it's one thing that we don't, we talk about capacity for sewer sanitation stuff, as it relates to this development getting to the main. But, you know, we've had a ton of developments come through here in the last couple of years. How is that impacting the actual sanitation system at the treatment facility?
Yep, so we look at all of it. So we look at their local distribution system within their subdivision. We look at the trunk line system all the way down in its available capacity, all the way down to the treatment plant. A lot of that is through the master plant at that network. We have models that we've done. We look at the available treatment plant capacity. And on the water side, we look at water resources, their hydraulic capacity and water resource availability and water treatment availability. So all those are good. I can give specific numbers on this, like on the sewer side that was brought up. We're running at about 40% of our capacity of the treatment plant right now. So plenty of excess. There are some major upgrades coming to the treatment plant, but those are related to nutrient regulations changing at the state level, state, federal levels. So it's not a capacity, it's a.
Scott? So I'll start that one over. So we look at, on the water side, water treatment plant capacity, water resource availability, hydraulic distribution to the site, hydraulic distribution and fire flow availability within the site. On the sewer side, we look at sewer capacity of their local collection network, sewer trunk capacity all the way down to the treatment plant and sewer treatment plant capacity. The number I just threw out was the treatment plant itself, it's only operating at about 40% capacity. So we have a lot of room there. There are some major upgrades coming, but those are related to nutrients. So we'll actually be adding a side process for nutrient removal to meet new regulations, but the capacity is, is good for the foreseeable. And, you know, those systems, we plan those systems out 50 years, you know, so like as capacity is getting eaten up, you know, we're working on the next major expansion. The idea is impact fees from development, sewer rate fees, those are all paying into, you know, the eventual upgrading and expansions of plants as time goes down, as time goes by, their modularity can kind of keep adding capacity as you go, on that side of things.
Okay. Thanks Scott. Last one I had was, this is just for, for every one of these that comes before us. These are, these are city roads, once they're built, right? But because it isn't a subdivision, you know, the city road out here, the city's telling me whether I can park there or not and how I can park there. But within the subdivision, does the city relinquish that to an HOA every time? Or is it still gonna be the city saying, you know, you can't park cars on, you know, whatever Willow Drive here, or Willowbrook Drive?
So they'll be allowed on-street, so it's a city street, city right-of-way. HOA doesn't have any really control unless they have covenants. Some neighborhoods have covenants about like you can't have a car on the driveway or you can't have on-street parking. So barring any neighborhood covenants to saying otherwise, which if they want to enforce, that'd be on them. City enforces parking regulations in city right-of-way regardless of an HOA or not. Those are typically, you know, someone parking at an angle and obstructing the road, or someone parking on the wrong side of the road. Those kind of types of violations are usually what we see, or improper use of the right-of-way if they're storing dumpsters out there for weeks on end and blocking traffic, things of that sort. That's, that's our most common type of right-of-way parking enforcement. Campers, you know, sitting on a city street for too long. But all that said, they are allowed to, by city code, they're allowed to park and the width is sufficient for on-street parking within the subdivision.
Okay. And then, sorry, I thought it was the last one. This is my last one. The bridge?
Yeah, so I, that's what I get for going off memory.
Yeah.
I pulled up my thing, so it starts in the, or it's scheduled, and again, subject to approval by council. It's scheduled to start, spring construction in 26, or design in the spring of '26. Construction would start in the fall of '26 and spill into the spring of '27. That work could likely take place when Cedar Creek is lower for the winter.
Okay. And then, and that work is scheduled regardless of whether this development?
Correct.
Goes through?
Yeah, that's needed independently. This development's not the straw that breaks the camel's back. That's a need. You know, we're working on improving the 6700 corridor, getting rid of choke points, getting connections, getting the bridges connection. We want to get the bridge widened, and then likely when 6700 punches through the bridges, you'll see a lot more volume on 6700. The extension of East Oak Grove through the bridges, where 6700 turns there, and likely the first roundabout would likely be Niagara and 6700. Those would happen not the same time, but in likely close succession. So just like we did Hillcrest, we kind of went right after the other and essentially finished the corridor over a course of like eight years. There's still some room to do in between, but, you know, just making sure we can build the capital plan in time, those correctly, so you don't bring all that traffic on and all of a sudden you don't have a way to handle the intersections, kind of thing.
All right.
And I apologize if I, I can't remember what number I said, but I was trying to go off memory and the 65 projects in the hopper.
Yeah.
I got, I was, it might have been a year off.
Thanks, thanks for looking it up. Do you guys have anything else for staff?
For Scott, I want to make sure that that, that date didn't change, because somebody heard it was 2025, you were starting the bridge, and now that never was on the budget.
So I remember last meeting I pulled up, we have a calendar for the, like, we time our major closures, because we can't close two streets, you know, two major streets next to each other. So that's, that was a fixed schedule. I remember pulling that up last time. So that hasn't changed since we talked last time. And again, that's why I pulled it back and went back to it to make sure I'm pulling the right number out of there. And I'm gonna, I have it right here. So let me just make sure I did not misspeak. 6700 Road, Cedar Creek Bridge replacement. It's starting in the fall? Yeah. Fall of '26, starting construction. Oh, yes, yep. Just got through budget for '25 and all my numbers are mixed up. Yes.
What you referenced was the fixing of the dip in late 2025, I think is what.
The dip was a maintenance thing that was for the summer. Yep, that's done, yeah.
I think maybe that's what you missed.
Yeah, we talked, I remember talking about that last time, but yeah, the full, the, the plan for the bridge is a full replacement, so it'd be going to the full right-of-way width and actually through this and discussions on Sugar Pine, secure the right-of-way necessary to do the full widening to bring it to the full arterial template, which, you know, the road won't be that wide yet, but it'll give plenty of room for shoulders and pedestrians, sidewalk facilities, so that when the widening of 6700 does come, the bridge doesn't have to be widened again.
Okay. Thanks Scott. Sorry, man, the public comment portion's over. If you want to talk to Scott afterwards?
I'll be here.
By all means, he will hang out and talk to you. Anything else Phoebe?
No. I think, I think you guys had some really concerns. I agree with the one only access point for the subdivision looks a little iffy, but, but I trust the city's done what due diligence and what they have to do. David, you asked like a bridge between subdivisions. David, you know, we don't know that there's gonna be a subdivision. Like they said, we only know what we know, so we can't, we cannot go with that one, so.
And one thing I can say on that front, too, so there's, there's a little history on the bridge there. So back when this annexed originally, back in, I think, the early 2000s, there was, as part of an annexation agreement, there was requirement for, I can't remember if it was a bridge or at least a pedestrian bridge. I believe it was a vehicle bridge. That got modified in 2014, so about 10 years ago now. Development at the time, you know, as we were coming out of recession, asked us to relook at the bridge, whether we would want a bridge there. With our modern road network plans, we have no plans for a bridge between those two subdivisions. And the reason being, we have one on 6700. So 6700 obviously continues to get improved as a major corridor and maybe lightly answering questions. So, you know, roundabouts would happen on all those intersections eventually, all the, where every minor arterial hits 6700, eventually those get roundabouts. That becomes the true thoroughfare that this would feed into. With a major multimillion dollar, probably three to, probably three million dollar bridge right there on 6700, to have another bridge, you know, be a little smaller width, because it's not a minor arterial, but the loads are still the same, because there's concrete trucks and still a lot of come across it. So it's still a, you know, million to two million dollar structure, you know, 700 feet, or even if you went to the far end of the subdivision, in duplicate to the main minor arterial roadway right there. And, you know, that gives some residents a way out to the south, but it also bring more Brookside Meadows traffic up through Iron Horse as well, if they're looking to stay off of 6700. We want general traffic practices, you want to bring, you want the neighborhoods to go into, you want them to interconnect where possible, which with Cedar Creek being so wide, it's not economically feasible for the development. And then for the taxpayers, it's not a responsible use of taxpayer dollars to someday have to, you know, maintain and replace a multimillion dollar bridge that's duplicate to one that's just right beside it. And so with all of that, that came out of the annexation agreement. So not, not required within any agreements or by the comp plan would there be a bridge between these two neighborhoods. And we're fully in support of that, given how this would, it's got minor arterials on both sides. So there's plenty of ways out for this neighborhood to get access and get to where they want without funneling that traffic through other residential neighborhoods.
Okay. Thanks Scott. Steve? Nothing? Ron?
And this one's a little personal. I just want to say that I would never, ever not recuse myself if there was one little bit of an issue that I had with the person that was coming up. Never, ever would I ever do that. So I, I did not like that comment, but you have your prerogative to say that.
Okay. Just a follow-up chat.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks Ron. All right. You guys have any other questions for the applicant based on the public comments? Phoebe, no? Steve? Nothing? Ron? Nothing? Okay. In that case, where are we at here? All right. Well, if we don't have any other questions or concerns, if anyone's ready to make a motion, I would entertain one.
Easily entertained.
Easily entertained.
So yes, I will make a motion. Or do I really have to read all that?
Yep, please do. And make sure you hit the conditional approval.
The conditional, all right. I hereby make a motion to recommend to city council approval of the preliminary plat application with the following conditions. The approval of this preliminary plat is expressly conditioned upon staff, city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all the conditions being satisfied. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
All right, thank you, Phoebe. Do I have a second?
I'll second you.
Thank you, Ron. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming tonight. If you do want to stay for the second one, please do. If you're not staying, we'll give you a couple of minutes to go out. And if Chad's back there, if you could let him back in.
people still do it. Yeah. Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I, I've said it since day one, they shouldn't be allowed to be on the planning commission.
Or, or they just like recuse themselves at every, every turn. Yeah, yeah. All right, staff, we ready to move on to number two here?
Yes.
Let's, let's do that.
So item two, this is an annexation application known as the Leonard Farm addition. This is the schedule for the meetings so far and in the future. Tonight serves as the planning commission recommendation of a zoning designation. The hearing before city council is scheduled for November 5th for the first reading. This is a 71.22 acre site that is within the city's urban growth boundary, the City of Montrose Sewer Service Area and the City of Montrose Water Service Area. The area's urbanizing and more than one-sixth of the proposed annexation.
Uh, there will be an annexation impact report required. We will file that with the county. Staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, city and state annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan. You know, that, Scott, did you have anything?
Yeah, just real quick, so, um, all the infrastructure stuff we talked about at the preliminary plat stage, um, that's at the preliminary plat stage. So, you know, considerations of traffic, um, utility capacity, all those things generally don't come into play with a zoning, um, because, you know, with, with enough money, any problem can be fixed. Um, and that if there are issues identified during the, um, preliminary plat process, um, that's when, uh, they're identified and if improvements are needed, um, they will adjust their development or, or do the improvements as, as needed. Um, so, um, we don't get into any of those weeds really at this stage at all. We'll save that for the preliminary plat.
Okay, thanks, Scott. You got any other questions for staff? No? Chad? No? Okay. Uh, all right. I assume you guys are the applicant, if you'd like to come up.
Chad, you reappeared.
I'm Matt Miles, twelve-eighty-two West Oak Grove, Montrose. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to add to the city staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions you've got.
Well, uh, you left us with a job to do in the future by not being able to get that little sliver on the road. But other than that, uh, I don't know, do you guys have any questions for Mr. Miles? Nope? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I see us doing a future cleanup there. All right, um, if we don't have any other questions, we'll open up for a public comment. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back up here. You guys got any other, last minute questions? Any discussion?
Yeah, I think there's still, I, I want to push Scott a little bit. And he, he said, "Don't ask this question." I'm going to ask anyway.
You can ask all day long.
Okay. So, three-A indicates a potential for high density. The only thing that I'm really noticing is there's no alignment with other exits in the, you know, the neighborhood directly north. It just does not align. How do, so since we're spending all of the developer's money to fix this issue, I know you love alignment. How are we going to fix? Because I doubt, I doubt they're going to want to move their golfing pond to create some alignment for that other neighborhood.
Yes, and this one has a long history as well. Yeah, I, I think, like, big picture, that stuff is relevant, so very happy to answer it. Um, so within the region, um, there's generally, and you've seen it in our hearings, we like neighborhood interconnection, parosities, kind of what they call it between neighborhoods, where, you know, it's not everything, um, within a neighborhood funneling to a single neighborhood road to then get out through another neighborhood, um, that they can all diffuse and disperse and have, all have good access to the minor arterials. Um, this one's unique in that, you know, we need, ultimately, the comp plan shows a connection, um, between, in this vicinity, between where Bridges Drive punches out-
Mm-hmm.
-and Otter Road. Um, the challenge there is, in some cases, some of that land is either in the county or not under our control, um, or, uh, there's pretty significant topography constraints as you get down towards Otter Road, there's some pretty good hills and stuff on, towards the eastern end of existing Otter Road. And, and then there's other development that's actually working on development towards east, and you've probably seen some of the initial construction of that, where they've started the Bridges Drive extension. Um, we've been working on this with various landowners around there and internally of, of what that's going to look like. And where we've landed generally is we would be running a minor arterial through Bridges, starting at Bridges Drive, you know, starting straight for a little bit and then starting to curve. And getting down to Otter Road, um, it kind of comes down to how it would, timing would affect what this development and the adjacent development to the east and to the west intend to do and, and the timing of how they intend to do it. So the exact alignment hasn't been ironed out yet. Um, the one that's going in right now, it'll stop at their first cul-de-sac and it can go either way from there. Um, but what envisioned through this area is a spine minor arterial roadway. Um, it'd probably be built kind of like existing sixty-seven-hundred is right now, where you'd put the sidewalk, you dedicate the full right-of-way, um, but you don't need all of that width yet. Um, and so they would build two lanes of traffic and then act, the difference would be they'd actually landscape the area between the existing road and the sidewalks, you know, that mud mess like we have on existing sixty-seven-hundred. Um, but, um, get the, get the roadway through there, get a bridge over Dry Cedar Creek, um, where this is a minor arterial, that's a, obviously a warranted place for a bridge, and Otter is a long ways around for EMS response. And so all that will play into the timing and sequencing of how this goes together and will gain independent access to that minor arterial. The horses unfortunately kind of left the barn to like interconnect with Woodgate subdivision or Otter Pond subdivision. There was intent to, somewhere along the lines, um, there were pieces that got deeded back from the city to the HOA, and so that control's been lost. Like, if we had to utilize eminent domain to get it back, we could, but if the traffic studies can, can demonstrate that they can get to the minor arterials and it works, we typically wouldn't do that. Eminent domain's a, a last resort type thing usually, um, and you have to have a really strong case for it. So, um, you know, this, we'll, more to come as far as when we see sketch plans and layouts and we can kind of, um, dive into it deeper, but in, in general, there will be a minor arterial coming through this area or a collector coming from this area over to the minor arterial should it end up on the property immediately to the east, um, to get the access out. And obviously you can see the future challenges too, you get to Otter Road, um, Otter Road's not built for a large amount of traffic either, so, um, making sure that we understand when those improvements would be necessary and how you sequence time. Do you start at the north? Do you start at the south? Can you only do so much at the south? All those things, none of that's been answered yet, but those are all things that are playing into the discussions and kind of how the design is being steered at this point. I know that really doesn't answer your question, but I kind of don't have an answer yet.
But you can envision fixing, an ability to fix the problem potentially?
We don't, there's, um, we don't see anything here that would back us into a corner, that there aren't solutions for traffic circulation, response times, um, all of those things. Um, it'll really come down, especially at this scale. So you join us, you know, I believe they own some of the property to the west, and you're talking a really large subdivision, um, you know, there'd be a lot of those details to work out and, and make sure it all works. And it's actually beneficial to have it all under the same ownership because then you can, you have land control to do those kind of things.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks for Scott. So a little bit that goes out to Ogden, is that between the two houses that they could feel?
I think it's like an old bureau right-of-way or something, isn't it? Do, I can't exactly remember that little, little flagpole at the top northeast corner.
There's that house on the west side, Scott, and then the drainage on the east next to Coker's new sale office.
So that house that's going in there, yeah, that little right by Bridges Drive. And wasn't there like a bureau reclamation strip in there somewhere?
That's on the other side.
Oh, that's the other one. Matt's going to give us a lay of the land.
Yeah, where that little office is going, went up?
Yeah, yeah, that's, I think, just immediately east of the black line there.
The bureau, the bureau has a little, um, strip that's in alignment with Odell Road. And that little, that little piece that goes out to Ogden that's, uh, funded with like an eighty-six-foot wide right-of-way that was meant for access, but it's only a couple hundred feet away from Bridges Drive, which is a minor arterial. So Bridges Drive will extend on to Coker and then under the current agreement with Coker, it comes over to the common property line and then will either tie on there like Scott said or take the minor arterial across to us. Yeah, there it is, Scott, it's got that.
So this, this is Bureau.
That's Bureau.
This is, right of right-of-way, but again, that's Bridges Drive, so.
Right, that's where the construction is going, that's the old house, okay.
This is the construction going on right now by a different building.
Right, which came in force about a year, two years ago.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. You guys got anything else? No? Ron?
Nope.
Good. Phoebe? Steve? All right. Then I would entertain a motion. There is, there is one because we have to give it, we have to give it some kind of zoning.
That's, that's my mistake, but, um, it's, oh, yeah. Uh, it would, it would just be a standard motion. That's my mistake for not putting that in the packet, but.
I can shh.
It's all right. Chad's got it in his head, he can do it. He had all that time out there to practice.
I can pull up a mock one if you need me to. I've got it drafted here that I can share on the screen.
Yes, I will. Motion to your motion, if we like your motion.
Something like that. There we go. Photographic memory, boom.
Follow the people.
You want to go just look at his computer?
Jase, should I just read from behind your back?
You can do that.
Let's do that.
Just speak on my mic.
Let the record state that Chad is using Jase's mic.
I'm just still reading and digesting. Okay. So I move to recommend to city council approval of the initial zoning request of R-three-A medium-high-density district. The request meets the code criteria based upon the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Ron, thank you. All right. Any discussion necessary, guys? No? Okay. Uh, in that case, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, gang, other business. Do we have a meeting next time?
We do have a meeting scheduled for October ninth. Um, any other business?
No, maybe one update. It's been a while since we've talked with you.
Yeah, what's, what's happening?
So we're moving forward, uh, kind of full steam ahead with the code update process, and right now we're looking at an open house to be scheduled likely in very early November. So I'll get those dates to you once solidified. Um, so we'll have, for that meeting, we'll have basically full red lines ready for public view. We've got a lot. We did a council presentation just a couple weeks ago with a fair bit of red lines and got some good guidance from that, but we'll have a public open house here coming up in about a month, uh, and then that would move forward for adoption presumably in December to council. So exciting there, it's a long process, uh, it's been quite some time with the consolidation and then now with some more, uh, kind of major code amendments specific to some housing initiatives, but really excited to get that one behind us. I'm trying to think of anything else. Nothing's immediately coming to mind though.
Is that, uh, has the code update process been mainly focused on, uh, the residential part of our land use code versus the commercial part?
Primarily, uh, yeah. So we, we have grant funding that's really specific to housing, but we are looking at the code, the land use code as a whole to really do a wholesale update. So the initial consolidation process, what we've already gone through, that was just getting everything in one spot, uh, so we didn't do a whole lot of major changes with that process. It just took a ton of time because everything was scattered across the board. Um, now we're doing some, some larger scale changes and really modernization of the code. So some commercial things in there, we're really updating and revamping our use table, uh, and just making sure everything kind of jives with current standards, but a lot is housing-specific.
Okay, cool. You guys got any questions for staff? About that?
Anything on an alternate, the planning commission alternate?
Totally forgot. Yeah, um, so we had two applicants this time around. One of them unfortunately had dropped out, so we do, uh, next week at city council, there is one alternate position that we'll be interviewing the city council, uh, and then presumably after that we'll know a little bit more. So there could be a new alternate member at likely not the next meeting, but potentially the one after.
Cool, that's good. All right, well, in that case, guys, you have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Thanks, Ron. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Thanks, Phoebe. All those in favor?
Aye.